Yeah, 5:00.
What's that, Mike?
Who's missing?
Kevin.
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 I'm here.
He's there.
He's there.
Hi. Can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Good.
Excellent.
Alright, at this time I'll call to order the August 5th, 2014 meeting of the Acton School Committee. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Okay, then, let's look at approval of the minutes of the meeting, the regular meeting of July 8th, 2014.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of July 8th and the executive session meeting of July 22nd.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we accept the meetings of the regular, minutes of the regular meeting of July 8th and the executive session of July 22nd. Any discussion? All in favor?
Is he raising his hand?
Yes, he is, he's voting. Any comments from the public?
Yes, I just wanted to mention one thing that due to our small class sizes at the junior high level and Sanford Junior High School cutting soccer this year, I have invited the Sanford Junior High School soccer players to play with Acton as part of Acton's team, and I've had quite a great response so far. They would have to provide their own transportation here for practices and games from 3:00 to 5:00 every day, but so far the response has been great and it gives an opportunity for Sanford and Acton kids to play together before they actually go to high school and play together.
Was this boys and girls?
Boys and girls, yep. So, an alert now went out to the Sanford community and an alert now has gone out to the Acton community as well, so.
Alright, well, if you have an overwhelming response, would you have like cuts and all that?
No, the expectation is that it's not going to be an overwhelming response because it's going to be parents that have to provide the transportation and not everyone's going to be able to do that. And the coach is okay with large numbers and soccer, you can always go with large rosters too. So, right now we're just keeping it open to 7th and 8th graders and the numbers are perfect right now, so.
And the conference has been alerted, they're okay with this?
Yep.
Okay.
The irony is how hard Tracy fought for just the opposite opportunity. It's only two years.
Right. To have us go down there and play.
For different sports, right, and now they're coming here, so it's kind of a great thing.
That's good, that's awesome. Any other comments from the public? There are none, let's go on, any communication or correspondence?
Yes, a couple more things. There was a special education report that was delivered to me to give to you about the question that happened. The school committee asked for an update on the special education enrollment and this is the enrollment that has been for 8, 2014, 57 students in total. We can pass that out, that was requested by someone in the world, I guess.
Yep. Any other correspondence?
Yes.
I don't have access to this, do I?
Pardon me?
Do I have access to this report?
It can be emailed to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Alright. And the other report that I have is a report, it's a letter that I have sent to Mark and Marita Lowell and they were helpful to the physical education department by offering us nine tennis rackets that could be used by the students in physical education classes. And four of the rackets were brand new and five of the rackets were used but in very, very good shape. So, this letter was sent to them thanking them for their donation. I said that the value was not less than $100 in total. We will put them to good use in the physical education classes. You never know, the spark that ignited when a first-time tennis player touches their first racket may eventually turn into a U.S. Open contender. Thanks again for your generosity.
Okay. Any other correspondence?
Nope.
Was that, that was the special education report?
The first was a special education report and if you didn't hear me, the second was the Lowells gave us nine very good tennis rackets for the phys ed department.
So, the second correspondence was a thank you letter to Percy and Marita Lowell for their gift of their tennis rackets.
Okay.
Okay?
They actually also donated a brand-new soccer ball. They dropped it off to me one day.
Okay.
So, I put that in there with Kristen's stuff that she had donated for the summer.
Okay, we'll go on to the superintendent's report.
Okay. The thing that we've worked, we've worked on many things this summer, very, with the planning and organizing of the school to make everything ready for the 2nd of September. But, one of the things that I'm really, I'm very pleased with is the way that the teacher evaluation committee is coming together and they're working very hard, they're meeting every two weeks. But highlighting the work that they're doing, I want to announce that we're having a special mini-conference, we'll call it, the state associate Mary Payne, who's in charge of helping school districts put together their teacher evaluation plans and then inevitably or eventually approve those plans. She has agreed to come down and visit with us 10 o'clock on the 14th here. And we put out a request to other school districts and we've had several RSVPs already and we're looking forward to this good conference to help us know where the state is, where we're at in the various districts so that we can work on this extremely valuable and timely program of teacher evaluation formulation so that it's completed by June as requested by the state. And so, we're very, we're asking again that other folks in other districts join us and I think we'll have a good try.
I know some, I know there are some coming from Sats.
Yes. This is a very important, everything that I do is, I think, very important and talk about it is very important, but this is something that's different that I don't think the board and I expected when I was happy to help you out starting, I think it was the 19th of August. I knew that I would have to be certified by the state of Maine, but I had been a superintendent in New York and been an assistant superintendent in New York for better prior to 10 years and didn't really think that it would be a problem getting certified. But I did go through the rigorous procedure that they had asked me to do and filed many, many pieces of paper and memos and descriptions of work that I had done. But it all kept coming back to one flaw in my resume and that's that I have not been a classroom teacher. Now, Maine has a state statute, not a regulation, a state statute that says that a superintendent cannot be a superintendent unless they've had three years of teaching in a classroom in a regular education setting. Now, I had many years of leading corporate entities and forming strong organizations and having English as a second language classes in one of my businesses that I put together and sponsored and also gave seminars, excuse me, in various management things, time management, other things. But, these things that were private sector did not in their mind add up to three years of education, classroom experience. And since it's not a regulation, since there can't be much wiggle room, what's happened is that the state has finally determined after analyzing all my credentials that while I may be a capable person, I can't fill the role as a part-time superintendent because it would put myself or the school in jeopardy. Doesn't mean I can't help you in many ways, but I can't carry that burden. So, I've been working with the school committee about a plan which will enable them to move forward, me to continue to help you, but also not put the school at risk and not put me at risk for not being properly credentialed. So, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Shane, the board, the school committee president, as to her description of what they think a new role could be based on this development.
Well, an executive session earlier before this meeting, the school committee voted to have Betsy Sancia come back one half-day a week as our official superintendent. She's going to be coming back on a per diem basis just to help us out in the interim. We also voted to have Ken continue on a per diem basis at this time, working on specific issues that we've been in to work on. And we are going to, what's the word I'm looking for?
Advertise.
We're going to advertise right away for an interim superintendent for a year. And when the interim superintendent, when we find an interim superintendent, then he will replace.
He or she?
He or she. Will replace the two people that we have per diem that are going to be helping us out in the near future. So, that's.
And we're also doing a study, what was it, the positional analysis?
We're also looking at, Kevin, maybe you could explain that, what we're looking at with your friend Bill?
So, I think a year or so ago, I don't know who's in the room, but a colleague of mine, not of a different company, who does a variety of work with districts across the country, specializes in part in doing positional analyses, analyses of all different positions within school districts. And he came, I think, a year or so ago to sort of chat with the administrative team about that kind of work and I'm going to contact him to see if he is available to look at the needs of Acton, given its unique nature, and to sort of see what actually are the needs of for the superintendency in regards to Acton, so.
Right.
An outside person who can look at it objectively.
We've discussed several things, do we need a superintendent, in-house superintendent? Could we contract at Sanford? Could we change our positions around a little bit and maybe look at a combination superintendent-principal? And then hire somebody to do, to be like a curriculum coordinator that would be like an assistant principal? We've looked at all kinds of different things to see what would best fit Acton, best fit our needs here. And hopefully, after he comes, he'll have some advice for us as to what would be the best way for us to look forward. So, that's, that's one of the main reasons that we're, when we advertise, we're looking for an interim superintendent for the year so that we can see where we are. If we get an interim superintendent who meets all of our needs, then we might want to continue with that person if they were interested, but this is what we're looking at, is the short term for this coming school year to see what we can, what we can work up.
I'd like to mention that in the interim, the work with Betsy and myself will be budget neutral because there wouldn't be any. And what we've done is, it was two and a half day, now it'll be two day and it should be a half day, so it works budget-wise. There may be some people that are concerned that we haven't budgeted for more management money.
Okay. So, you're all done with your report?
I don't want to forget the gentleman standing there with earphones on. Everyone is doing wonderful work, but one person who's kind of working all by himself is Michael Corey. Single-handedly brought 100 new computers online or more than 100 while he's also assisting the teachers with the installation training for the empower program for the automated report card system. And, Michael, we really appreciate this, the summer days aren't long enough and we're very appreciative of the work you're doing for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions of Ken, what is your report?
I have a, just a comment in regards to what he, the early part of his report. Maybe it's for later, but again, because I have to bug out a little bit early. I'm wondering, and maybe this is for the policy committee, maybe this is for new work, but, and I say this not having done my homework fully yet, but I'm thinking it's probably important and I'm curious what others think, that as the, it sounds like good work is taking place in regards to the evaluation work, I'm thinking it behooves the school committee to look at the current policies to see if one, want to create or revise our existing policy in regards to that so that it's supportive of that work. Given the move to proficiency-based learning and a lot of the changes around evaluation, I want to make sure that our policy kind of is, you know, supports the vision we want moving forward in regards to what kind of data we use and those sorts of things. So, I'm thinking that should be an agenda item upcoming.
For our next meeting?
Yeah.
Any other comments?
Maybe, maybe next meeting is we look at existing policy and then take next steps from there.
Okay. Well, I haven't got my page here, but I know the next thing's probably the principals' report.
Administrative reports.
There you go.
You skipping over progress monitors, rooms, strategic plans, you're skipping over all that?
Whatever we'll have in the way of dovetail discussions have sort of started already by me mentioning the eval committee and the fact that the school committee wants me to concentrate on strategic plan as part of my two days. But there's nothing really to report by us, other than what the administrative reports show.
But this strategic plan update, we are going to have a Saturday meeting at 9:20, just so we have that in the minutes.
Okay. That's efficient.
9:20, and what was the time, what time did we set for that?
We didn't really set a time.
We didn't set a time, we just set the date, right?
Yeah.
So, like 9:00 to 12:00 or something like that is what we're thinking, 9:00 to noon?
What day is this?
The 20th.
September 20.
Yeah, but I got it on hold.
Yes.
So, we say 9:00 to 12:00?
Yeah.
9:00 to 12:00.
AM, right?
Yes.
Well, I think that doesn't matter.
Funny guy.
Okay, this is.
Okay, so in my report I have, first of all, the what-if meeting, we had our second round. And as I said in my report, one of the conversations that came out of that was how do we provide more enrichment for our students? And the conversation was led to looking into the week after school gets out, offering a one-week kind of rec enrichment camp. I've listed Lori Williams, Matt Pettis, Melinda Van Hauer and Eileen Worcester have agreed to work together, come up with a couple of different scenarios to propose that I could help them work through, kind of give a trial run for what it would look like if we could offer summer programming beyond just summer school for half a day. Conversation came up that after I get the proposals and work with them, you know, we would probably even look to the town because usually rec programs are actually run through the town. But this would give a trial run, we'd get feedback from parents, we'd look at meeting the needs of parents as well as students. So, that was a real exciting meeting. And the group is, is not the same every time, people come as they can and I've gotten phone calls and emails for those that couldn't make it before but want to be kept in the loop. So, it's going to be real, it's a real grassroots, it's really led by the parents imagining what their school could provide. So, I'm really excited, I'm going to be sharing with them, what I just shared with you is the draft of where we are headed for the strategic plan because I think the group's thoughts belong also in the strategic planning, you know, of what Acton could provide. PE health, with the resignation of Kristen, we have advertised and are getting now applications in for people who are or could be duly certified. So, that if we continue on our interest road of having health for our students, we would have somebody who is certified in both to offer that as part of our future curriculum. So, very excited about that. I know that many people think that the summer months are quiet and relaxing by any pool of, excuse me, any body of water, but you'd be amazed at how many staff members are in the building, are doing work on their own, are sharing online, attending meetings, attending workshops. We had teacher leader meeting, we had a retreat for the 6-8 teachers. As Ken mentioned, the evaluation work continues. It has been an amazing, and even Mike and I, you know, we worked on the structural part of the strategic plan together. So, much of what happens in the summer months is not solo work. It's not just getting lesson plans ready for an individual classroom, but it's requiring a lot of partnerships and teams to work together. And, and the teachers are doing that, it's just amazing how much is going on behind the scenes when everybody is supposedly off for the summer. And so, what I gave to you is a sample of where we're still building. When you get a chance, this is also online on Google Drive. So, as teams get developed and start working on their individual objectives under the goals, part of what that planning will need to be is moving things around, making sure they're under the right objectives, making sure the action plans are doable, who's, who's assigned to be responsible for them? Is there a budget cost that comes with it? The timeline pieces will need to be filled out. But this is starting to give structure and I'm hoping that as we develop mini-work groups on particular areas, we'll start to see this fill out and then we can really have a three-to-five-year plan of where Acton is going and goals that are set are met. Any questions?
Anybody any questions?
Looks good. Nice to see it.
Okay, let's move on to Kim, please.
Basically, over the last three weeks, an audit was completed. I attended a week-long grant-writing workshop with Lisa DeWitt and this last week I've been completing all the annual filing requirements for MEDOMs and MIMPARs and everybody. The audit went really well. They really do like our newer software. They appreciate it.
As, as do you, yes.
Yes, I do, yeah. One of the, there were two requirements and I'm not sure, with a management letter, I have not seen it yet, but we should be seeing the management letter. But, they would like us to have an accounting policy regarding our fund balance, you know, before the, before next year. We also need, for the state, for our special ed grants, we also have to have a complete accounting policy. So, how we do our purchase orders, you know, all our step-by-steps, what we do with cash, what we do with. And I do have a draft from a school that, that we get from the state that is very good and it's just a matter of going through and tailoring it to what Acton needs. And when, when I kind of get done with a little draft, I will give it to Ken so he can present it to the policy committee and you guys can go from there. It is something that is required by November 30th for us to continue with our special education grants. So, that's definitely the first policy I'll work on. And then, the fund balance policy, I also have something that RHR Smith would like us to follow. So, again, we'll do the same process, tailor it, I'll give it to Ken and then I'll go to the policy committee. So, that's, and I believe also the town's audit went really well. Everything matched from the school to the town without a problem, so that was good. Lisa DeWitt and I went to USM for a week, we received a lot, we had a nice book. It's a lot of websites on it. So, regarding anything with grants, including the federal-state foundation grants and other types of grants that are available out there. The, we each had to have a specific project for our class and I did a research project that was specifically on alternative fuel sources, so other ways to look at electricity and our heating system, to see if there's greener ways that we can do it. And I kind of looked at those two because those two alone are about $100,000 in our budget, so. And I was hoping that, you know, working with Andy and Mary as far as our long-term planning goal, that, because it's something that would have to really be explored first. Certain things I was looking at, I knew that Colby College was going to put some very huge, you know, solar panel-type systems and stuff like that. I'm kind of curious to see how they actually make out considering Maine and winter and everything else. So, there's something to explore. And, other than that, our office is, you know, packing up all last year's stuff, putting it away, getting everything, you know, in line with all our books for this year and just doing all the required, like I said, filings. I have a lot of August 25th deadlines to meet for MEDOMs and everything else, so that's my life.
I'd like to comment that Kim probably wouldn't tell you this, but she and Lisa were at the top of the class, near the top of the class at the, at the program. There were 21 students?
Yeah, I know, we did.
Our two ladies did extremely well in this one.
We had fun, we had a lot of fun.
That doesn't surprise me too much. That's great, thank you, Kim. Thanks for taking the time to do that. I think it's, the more awareness we can get about what grants are available and the more grants we can apply for, the more we can pick up, fill some of the gaps that our budget can't, can't fill. And add some of the things back on it that we're missing, that we'd like to have.
Yeah.
I know when I used to go to summer camp, we used to have these lists and the list would say, "Things that you need to bring." And then beside that would be a list of, not necessary, but nice to have. It would be things like a flashlight and a coat or stuff like that. So, that's what, that's the way I look at grants, they give us the ability to, to provide things that are.
Be nice to have.
Very nice to have in terms of our programs. Alright, Michael.
Okay. As Ken mentioned, I have been deploying the devices and systems for next year. The new server's in place, I've now counted over 220 devices I've updated. I'm anticipating 250 total devices in the school. It's more than kids, if you start looking at it. Every teacher is going to be receiving a new laptop if they haven't already. Every classroom teacher is also going to be receiving a document camera and those who request one can get one. Special ed, specialists, the library. It's basically a digital overhead projector that can be utilized for looking at a book, writing on a piece of paper, you can even use it as a webcam to project just a video or image. What else? I'm deploying, right now I'm putting projectors in classrooms and I'm installing new ones in the computer lab, the library and wherever there are permanent projectors installed. Now, probably my projects for next, next week, hopefully I'll have that finished by next week. So, every teacher will receive, every classroom teacher will receive a projector as well. Professional development will also be rolled out the end of this month from Apple and myself. We'll be learning the ins and outs of some of the Mac software that's available on these laptops. And I'm also going to be organizing different trainings that are going to be continuous throughout the year. Google Drive, Google Calendar, a lot of Google tools. We'll get into Microsoft Office, the document cameras will be part of the training sessions, probably smartboards. I'm going to try to have professional development throughout the year covering all technology resources we have available and then some. And then, we will also be looking into educate, empower, I don't know what they're calling themselves right now, which is a standards-based reporting, data gathering system that we can utilize as our report card as well. As of now, and this isn't, none of this is solidified because I don't even have the software yet, but it seems as if K through 5 are ready and willing to utilize the software for their report card needs. Six through eight are going to go through a transition period. They're going to continue using their current IP campus reporting They're going to continue using their current, if any, campus reporting, and they're going to start trying to integrate their assignments or their curriculum into the Educated Power System to report their standards. We're going to work on a timeline and, you know, goals, objectives with the team, some of which are here in the public. So there's not a lot on my report, but there's a lot of work involved, and it's not just me, it's, there's teams, there's effort, there's groups of people advising, supporting, and communicating on all of it. So hopefully everything will come together before the first progress report needs to roll out the door.
Of course it will.
So that's all I have to report on right now.
Thank you.
So as I look at your report, I'm just wondering, like, how many beach days you've had this summer?
Not many. Two or three beach days. I vacationed the end of last week. I'm vacationing tomorrow until the end of this week. And it is just, you know, gung-ho until opening day, pretty much. And then hopefully we can just breathe a little bit.
Deep breath, huh?
Yeah, a little breathing for everybody by that time.
Anybody have any questions, Ken?
I've got two comments, because I got to leave in a few minutes.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So first one is just an awesome job, Mike. The, I think Mike's reference, mention of all the professional development that's going to happen later on in the summer, I think is just a good opportunity, again, for the administration to, particularly with professional development, to really sort of see how the professional development supports the strategic plan, and to try to make those connections as explicit as possible to staff. I want to, I think, again, it's an opportunity for the vision to become clear, to make sure that the PD is really aligned with the strategic goals. It just helps everything be as cohesive as possible. So if that's going to happen, just an encouragement that all of that is as tightly connected as possible. Listening to the PD, it sounds like it's great. Just again, if we can use it as an opportunity to support the strategic plan in the mission, knowing the strategic plan is still evolving. So that's the first comment. The other one is, I feel a little reluctant to say this, but, and again, this comes after Mike, again, doing another good job with the report and the good reports we just had. We meet on Tuesdays as a school committee every month, correct? I know the answer to that. That's a yes. Ken, when do you typically send us the packets? You deliver them, which I really appreciate, again, by the way.
I usually try to do it on Thursdays.
Thank you for that.
Thursday before.
Say that again?
Usually I do it on Thursday, sometimes Friday.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I do it both electronically and by phone express, usually on Thursdays, Thursday afternoon, sometimes Friday mornings if we have late-breaking information.
That sounds, that sounds great, and that's been my recollection. The reason I bring it up is I don't think we've had all the reports once since, in the past year, in the packets. And it's been bothering me for some time, and I frankly think it's unprofessional. So I want to just put on the record that I would like the entire administrative team to really strive for the next year to have the reports in on time. Sometimes, because again, some of us like to work electronically and having the papers and having to move around papers when we're in the school committee meetings, again, is a hassle. And I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for the reports in on time.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks. So sorry to have to leave on that note, but I'll just get to you all and see. All I can see is, is that Ms. Packard over there?
That is.
Good to see you all, and I'll see you probably sooner than later.
Okay, bye.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
I just wanted to say thank you. I know technology myself, and it is a lot of work, and the students are really going to be excited about it, so thank you.
The teachers should be excited about it, too. They're all getting these projectors and new laptops.
Document camera.
Like Christmas over here.
Yeah, that's the one thing about my responsibility here is nobody complains, because they get new toys all the time, but certainly don't work. That's my only goal, is to make them work all the time. But as long as I can do that, then nobody has anything bad to say.
All right. Thank you very much, Mike. Good job, as always. Andrew.
As I mentioned in my report, we're plugging away at the summer cleaning program. Right now, we're really focused on floor care. The floor care is one thing that we kind of have to schedule around the extended school year program. But I'm pretty confident by the beginning of next week, the floor care will be done. Sanford Flooring is installing carpet in two classrooms. They started today, they'll be complete tomorrow. The gym floor is done. We have accomplished a lot more painting in the building this year than I had anticipated. And the reason for that is because the custodial staff has worked so well together this year as a team. They have been very independently finding areas that need improvement and just tackling them as a team. Typically, I try to get like three or four classrooms a year painted, and they have done the hallways, they've done the music room, they did Miss LaBranche's room, they did the office and the kitchen today, they did, I'm going to forget some of the ones that they did, but they have just exceeded what I was hoping to get accomplished with that this year. So very happy with that. And also, along with the teamwork approach comes, some of them have more experience than others, so they're sharing that knowledge, so that they're all getting to the same level. And it's really, it's really been effective this year. The other thing I mentioned in my report is that we have locked in on our oil price at $3.27 a gallon with Sanford. The business administrator, I'd spoken with Ken initially, I followed up with them, and then, once we had the contracted price, Kim and I got together and did a PO for it. And always glad, once we're locked in, it's kind of a sigh of relief, because when we budget, we don't know. And as I mentioned before, it gets pushed later some years, which this year is one of those years. So always glad to have that taken care of.
What'd we budget?
We budgeted $3.75. So that is helpful.
Who's the company?
CN Brown. Johnson and Jordan started the preventative maintenance on the boilers today. I've also scheduled for, they're going to replace the other AC unit in the lab, which we budgeted for this year. What else? Just, we're very busy, and we're watching our window shrink daily, because we know that, ready or not, things are going to roll, and...
What's the first teacher day?
The 27th and 28th?
They'll be here for the 25th and 26th is when they'll come in for some training, and then 27th.
27th is the official first teacher day.
Is that the day that you invite us to breakfast and to do our building walk-through and all that?
That's what I was getting at.
Is that what you were getting at? Yeah.
It will be either Wednesday or Thursday. We were also waiting to hear from Sanford, who is supposed to be offering some empower training, and they were talking about doing it one of those two days.
All right, just email us.
So, yeah.
Yeah, but I'd like, love to have any of the school committee members that are interested just to come in and walk through the building once we're finished. Something that we typically do, and gives you folks a chance to see, you know, what we do and what we strive for. And, yeah, I started last week sending out correspondence to teachers, letting them know that their rooms were complete. And I try to do that as we pluck them off and...
Where were the rugs being replaced?
This year, we did the music room.
Music, yeah.
And Christie King's room, which was one of the last rooms in the 78 wing.
I have kind of an unrelated question. I know the Day of Caring is coming up in September, and you guys do such a great job. I didn't know if you started to think about what projects volunteers could do on that Day of Caring? Just wanted to bring that up as kind of a side note.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to be a harder school than most.
I know, because it's beautiful, so.
I'm meeting with Jan and Bill, and Andy's part of that conversation on Thursday morning. Feel free to join us if you're not busy. So they're from the retired association, and so they're coming to talk just about that, about what else would we want? I talked to June Arbeloa about the hoop houses that they did at her school. So we have less repair than other schools might have. Some of them were in desperate need of painting, things were falling. So we get to actually go the other direction and think.
Enhance.
Enhance, yeah. What else, you know, grounds-wise, as well as, one of the things we have to look into is the nature trail, whether we could revive that or whether...
Well, now that you've got the snowshoes, we've got to use them.
Yeah. Very excited about that.
New chariot trails.
Can I mention to Andy that something both he and I want to accomplish, and maybe if you know the number or the name of the individual that Colby, was it Colby College where the award was given? Yes. Where the association gave the award to Jim. They said they would be happy to visit with us at a board meeting. Yeah, well, I've been bouncing some emails back and forth with the facility director from Portland, Doug Sherwood. And Jim Remy is actually the person who will be presenting. And Doug has been in contact with him. What they would like to do initially was they would have, they offered to come down to do a presentation for the board, and now they're thinking what they would like to do is do it at a school assembly, so that the students would be part of that process. So we're still trying to iron out a date in order to make that happen, so.
It would be nice if that happens, if we could have either Channel 6 or Channel 13 or some coverage to give the school some good publicity at the same time.
Yeah, absolutely. But as soon as I, as soon as I shore up a date, I'll definitely, I'll let you know and... I'll keep everyone in tune. Thank you.
And just another unrelated question, I'm on the long-term planning committee now.
Yeah.
Are you going to send out notes for when those meetings are going to start?
Yeah, probably once school starts and we get back into the...
Well, we're going to do a summer one, just to meet with the administrators, you know, in the next three weeks, or right before school starts. So we have to do that to like set our own agenda or what we want to do. But I think in the next three weeks, we should meet.
Okay.
Just for now.
Okay. We've already, any student data or upcoming data?
Lisa DeWitt passed this off to me. It had student names on it, so I had to photocopy without the student names. She has asked that she and Sylvia come and present in the September meeting, the overall program. But she did give me a paper copy of data for the summer program that we had done the grant for, Title I, Step Up. And so this is for your enjoyment, if you will. You can see that the percentage of increase in decoding words in that middle level, the average was 19%. A lot of students did exceptionally well. Everyone improved. So again, I gave you, she gave me just a paper copy. I don't have an electronic one, so I'll have to ask her for that without the student names in order to share with others. But it does give you an idea of what four weeks of that extra time did for those students. Like I said, she and Sylvia have requested to do a full presentation in September.
Are these this year's kindergarten kids or next year's?
These are kids who've just finished kindergarten and are going into first grade. Right.
Good.
And they loved it. Absolutely did not want to miss a day.
Tremendous improvement in each one.
Yeah, we had one boy who gave up Fun Town Splashdown. Told his dad, "Sorry, can we go after school?" "I'll go, but I can't miss summer school." Yeah, very cool. So I'm excited for them to share the details.
Okay, so we'll plan on that for our celebration of the learning in September. Any reports on long-term planning? No?
Not this evening.
Nope. Have the policy committee? No, not tonight. Is there any...
But what Kevin said, we have to look at...
Yeah, we have to look at those policies.
Those policies and what Kim said.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll pull them up so that you have...
Policies that Kevin mentioned and the ones that Kevin's... Okay, unfinished business? Any? And let's go on to new business. I think we've taken care of 11-1. So 11-2 is not a happy new business.
This is the, I wanted to save this communication for this item. This is a seven-year employee who we're going to sorely miss. Kristen Galapo has sent you her resignation. An exciting new career option for her out of education entirely.
But we don't have to accept this, and then she has to work, right? Does that have a call?
I could always get ahold of her and tell her that the board refused to accept her resignation. It worked for me.
She's too much. Seriously, I will make a motion to accept her resignation with regret and much sadness. Add that.
Moved by Mary and seconded by Jeanette, that we accept Kristen's resignation with much regret and sadness. Any further discussion? All those in favor? We don't need any further corrective session, do we?
No.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I do have a question. You skipped over 10 to resignation from the administrator. Is that not something that needs to be on here?
That was incorrect.
Oh, okay. Thank you so much.
Okay, any? Moved by who? Me. And seconded by Jeanette? Diana, whoever? All in favor to adjourn?
Yay!
So moved.